Okay, so I'd like to go ahead and open it up for public comment. At this time, only member of the public may address the commission on items of interest to the public that are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Speaker shall have a limited time. Please be brief and to the point. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item not appearing on the agenda, except that commission members may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by members of the public. Any public comments?
None via Zoom.
None via Zoom and none in person? Okay, I'll go ahead and close out. Public comment? Thank you. Next up, number five is approval of meeting minutes. We have a planning commission regular meeting minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we approve these individually or both of them at the same time? Both at the same time, yes. Okay, so we have planning commission regular meeting minutes for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve both planning commission regular meeting minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and planning commission special meeting minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Forte. Can you get a second motion?
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Um, sit here. And we have two extensions. So, there are two people who are not here, so we approve the meeting minutes for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. So we close off this item. Next up, we have the commission business. We don't have any. Next, we have the public hearings. So for public hearings, we have PH dash one, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, a revision of the planning commission of the city of Solidad amending conditional use permit number two thousand eighteen dash zero one.
Hi, good afternoon, planning commission, associate planner Ariana Mora with the city of Solidad. I don't think this is on what I'm doing. There you go. So tonight, we are presenting a staff report to consider and approve the resolution two thousand twenty-three zero eight, the resolution of the planning commission to amend conditional use permit two thousand eighteen zero one. The city of Solidad received a joint application from the Solidad marketplace and Boost Development for a new proposed development at the Solidad market, uh, sent marketplace located at Nestle Road, at the corner of Nestle Road and Los Coches. Um, as you may know, this project has been ongoing since around two thousand seven. Um, back in two thousand eighteen, this project came before planning commission to reinstate entitlements since in two thousand eight, the project developer then um, lost entitlements due to the economic recession that happened um, then. In two thousand eighteen, a conditional use permit was approved um, under uh, specific conditions and also included specific allowable uses that are currently conditionally approved in the highway commercial district. Now, the applicant and the owner are proposing to modify that amendment and include additional uses for commercial purposes that still belong in our current zoned area under the highway commercial district. These uses are proposed as building materials and supplies for machinery sales, truck sales and service. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, uh, the developer and applicant is coming forward to make that amendment to the existing conditional use permit. Um, currently, and uh, the property owner is in negotiations with Boost Development for a new tractor supply company in the Solidad marketplace. Therefore, the existing conditional use permit has to be modified in order to allow um, those services, those uses into the marketplace. If it is not amended today, the um, the uses would not apply to the marketplace and um, tractor supply would not be able to come into the marketplace as proposed. Next slide, please. Um, as provided in the application, uh, sorry, in the staff report, this is a tentative site plan. This is where tractor supply is intended to be in. We must note that the site plan is um, currently in modification and is just proposed as a draft. Uh, what we're bringing here today is just for the use of the conditional use permit. The site plan will be reviewed by staff to make sure it's in compliance with applicable, applicable, applicable codes and bring um, bring it forward to planning commission for site plan approval and architectural approval as well. Therefore, again, the use is only brought up to planning commission to be considered in order for them to continue the development and the project at the marketplace. Next slide, please. At this time, staff is bringing forward to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three zero eight to amend the current conditional use permit and add additional uses to condition number ten. The amendment was provided in the staff report where building materials, supplies for machinery sales, truck sales and service will be added as well as outdoor display. Um, the plans for the project include, include both indoor and outdoor um, storage of building materials and vehicles. Um, the applicant packet included a letter specifically showing what type of services tractor supply is intended to bring. Um, we are allowing and modifying the conditional use permit for incidental or accessory storage uses for the material and equipment. Again, subject to conditions as we verify and modify the site plan. Um, that will come to us at a later point. Next slide, please. Um, again, we're bringing this forward. Um, the applicant will have to modify the site plan with, again, if we approve this conditional use permit. Uh, for environmental review, a two thousand seven mitigated declaration was conducted during the initial stages of the project. Um, therefore, environmental review is covered and it does also exempt under CEQA guidelines one, five, three, 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 two, as an infill development consistent with local general plan and zoning requirements. So we must know that the uses that we're bringing forward are part of our zoning code under the highway commercial district as a conditionally used um, conditionally used uh, land use. However, we're adding that land use as a, as a permitted use into their existing permits. Another important thing that we must know is that this uh, type of use and the development that we're bringing forward is consistent with the general plan, our two thousand five general plan, where the city will ensure adequate commercial land to be designated and meet the present and future needs of residents, but also um, prioritizing new retail and commercial development and provide a wider range of shopping opportunities for the community. So those are two important considerations that do follow under the proposed amendment. Uh, and at last, uh, to conclude a staff presentation, um, we are bringing this forward to approve resolution, to approve the resolution and amend the conditional use permit to include the additional allowable uses. Uh, or if planning commission believes that uh, more information is required and more clarification is needed, we would seek staff direction. Um, and that concludes my presentation. Now, if um, the owner would like to add additional information, we do have the owner here as well as um, Boost Development, um, in case any questions go with them.
Hi, my name is John Lee with uh, Solidad Marketplace LLC. And I came here today just to answer any questions. I know there's been quite a few moving parts on our end on this project. There've been quite a few shifts in the economy and, and the commercial real estate world, so I just wanna open it up for questions for you guys. Cause from what I understand, Megan said, you guys probably have a few questions for us and I'd like to answer them for you.
Oh, well, first and foremost, thank you for coming and, and sharing your time with us.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Um, so I'm looking at the map and I know that we're not here to approve the map yet, but just to have an idea of where it's at. Uh, having lived in Fresno, I know that they put a tractor supply company in the middle of a shopping center.
Sure.
So um, where will the tractors be housed if you're bringing in any equipment and things like that?
Um, this is probably, uh, that would probably be better if you answer this one.
Hi, I'm Eva Gonzalez. I'm the applicant for Boost Development. Um, as I had mentioned, we're, the site plan is not finalized. We're, what we're calling our draft mode, just enough to kind of give you some information as to what we're looking at. Uh, but at the moment, um, we had proposed, there's a small area, um, this red area.
Oh, the red area, yeah. Okay. That, is it?
Right, so the, that's where we would have the, the tractor display area. This is not finalized. This is just a draft, but just for.
Yeah, that was my biggest question because I had seen it in Fresno that way and that, that it was in the, in the parking lot. So, and I was thinking, okay, I just wanted to get an idea. However, um, I believe it, it's a good idea to have, you know, the tractor supply company come in. You know, we only have Ellie Hearn pretty much up and down the valley. And having been, lived in South King Valley for over twenty-five years, I am familiar with tractor supply companies, so. Um, so it was kind of refreshing to hear somebody who's coming in. So, um, but this is really just about the conditional use itself, correct? Alright, thank you.
So I, I, I also have a couple of questions and I don't know if you could answer them, but I guess my concern would be it's great that tractor supply, you know, would be coming here to town. I think, you know, obviously the environment here, the, the the value would, you know, welcome this as tractor supply, but my question would be more about what is the, what is it displaced? Right, so we've seen um, over the years, the, the potential businesses that were supposed to come, right? So um, the restaurants and um, I think there was like a Ross, there's a Ross sign up there. Uh, so what's happening to all that and how is this affecting those potential moving forward?
So um, and I basically, what is, what's happened is, you know, we, we purchased a property in this is in July of point one, we immediately started working on the grocery outlet deal. We built several of them. We have a conforming lease. And then we started receiving offers from, you know, Ross, Famous Footwear, Five Below, and, you know, we started working through those deals. We got the lease. Um, we had uh, our general contractor was probably one of the top retail general contractors in the state. And we got a really good estimate from them, but we thought it was really good at the time. And then, you know, we were in constant contact with them over, you know, the next six to eight months. And, you know, right about the time we got our building permits, we got the actual bids back. They missed their number by over fifty percent. And, you know, when that happened, we, we tried to do several things. We looked at redesign efforts. Um, we went to the tenants to try to do rental adjustments. Um, some of these tenants were more open to that than others. Um, and it just the, the gap was so far to make this make sense. It uh, I mean, we've pretty much been kicking the can down the road until those came along with another alternative to, you know, help us keep momentum going, keep this project going. So this will displace some of the tenants that we had originally proposed. We're gonna have to terminate some leases. As far as where tractor supply is going, that's obviously where uh, Five Below and Famous Footwear we're going and a couple of other proposed tenants. Um, we will talk to them about shifting them down. Um, we haven't terminated any of these leases we have in place right now because there hasn't really been a need to. Um, you can't do that until they still have a process that their company needs to go through, tractor supply has a process they have to go through. And they can't start that process until they know that this use is gonna be accepted, so. There are several steps that we're still going through here, but I mean, the long and the short of it is with this grouping of retailers, they're all tied together through what are called co-tenancy clauses. They all say, we will go to this center of X, Y, Z is here, you know, so Ross has to have Famous Footwear, Famous Footwear has to have Five Below, and Five Below has to have those two. So, you know, I don't know what the reaction's gonna be from them if we say, hey, one of these guys is gone or if Ross isn't here, will Famous Footwear and Five Below still come here? Will Ulta possibly come here? I'm not sure. I mean, this is more of like, but I know we can't do all of them. I mean, it's with the cost of construction and the rent those guys pay. I mean, literally, if we gave this land to somebody for free with the condition that they have to build all those buildings, they wouldn't do it. It's um, I mean, the construction cost shot up so high that it's just that, I mean, at this point in time, it's not feasible. I mean, we looked at, you know, we had several GCs did this out after we got, you know, the bids back from our GC that missed their number by so much. And, you know, we tried the rental adjustments and it's just, there is no way to bridge that gap. So that, I mean, that brought us to where we are here today.
So with that said, moving forward, right, so, so we're maybe going away from, you know, Ross and, and Five Below. Moving forward, do you think having the tractor supply there located centralized location would uh, not attract other potential businesses?
Oh, I absolutely, I mean, that's this for, for us, just our group internally, this tractor supply deals loss. It's not, it's not something where we're making a profit. We're actually having to take a loss to get this done, but I mean, it's a manageable loss. And I think it also enables us to, you know, still create momentum. We still have several paths that we need to work on. And, you know, tractor supply is gonna bring a lot of activity into the shopping center. You know, I know Dutch Brothers is really close to breaking ground. I think that'll help. We have a couple of different quick service restaurants looking at the corner. And, you know, we haven't really been able to push this with tractor supply and what we're doing because we haven't had a, you know, a very clear direction. It's just kind of muddy right now. And, you know, once this is set in stone, I mean, we can kind of basically start our whole marketing campaign over here. And it's hard for us to go out and, I mean, we are talking to some of these restaurants out here on the corner paths, but it's you know, everything's still kind of a, well, well, maybe it's gonna, maybe we're gonna end up doing this. I mean, I think we're all trying to find a direction.
Yeah, because I'm trying to think, like, what's the vision of the center? Because we have a theater, we have a grocery store, and now we're gonna have a tractor supply store. We have Dutch Brothers. What, what? You know, like, what's the vision of the center um, moving forward?
Well, I mean, we're gonna have, I, I anticipate having two quick service restaurants out on these uh, and if you, oh, just maybe this.
Yeah.
What are you looking at? What quick service restaurants are you looking at?
Uh, several.
Wow.
Um,
Can, can I see that?
I can, you know, this is.
I think it's up there, yeah.
It's the same thing, it's the one.
It's the color coding one.
But I walk over here and.
Yes, of course.
I mean, what we envision here is a quick service restaurant here and then more than likely another one here with a drive-through. We have a leave of a tenant for, for this, for the corner right here. And I believe if we get that tenant, we'll get another one right here. All of these tenants tend to, it's, it's almost as if they need to see more people jump in and once they do that, they're more comfortable moving forward. So, I mean, that's where we're at. I mean, right now, I mean, I think grocery outlet's doing really well. I have a theater, I'm not, not quite sure, but, you know, the more synergy we create, I think it's gonna be better for everybody. And, you know, from talking to the theater operators, I mean, they're super excited that tractor supply may be coming in. They look at it as a big positive, so. I mean, as far as you know, the vision of the center, I mean, I think we, our vision is we just wanna find the most quality retailers that wanna go to Solidad. I mean, that's where our business and I will say this with these soft good retailers, I mean, they haven't, I this is, this isn't just happening to us. This is happening to everybody in our industry. They know it. And it's if, if they really wanted to come here, we could have figured it out. They just chose not to, they didn't want to bend. And, I mean, it, but it just is kind of put us into this position. I mean, we have tried several different ways to try to make it work.
Now, as far as the location, uh, it's really centralized, right? So, and having the tractors in the middle of the parking lot there, is there any flexibility with that location? Or is that the location you're aiming for? As far as like moving it closer towards the theater, that far corner back there?
Well, the, the Vida is, we just got our building permits for that. And that's gonna start probably towards the end of the year. I mean, we can't.
Right, because I kind of see like that, that parking lot back there where it would be ideal for the tractors to be kind of back there.
Mm-hmm.
Which part?
Uh, next to the theater back there?
That's the theater's parcel.
Oh, so um, just as to know, um, staff did actually request that the uh, that display be moved to where that island is on, on the other side of the parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to create more of a buffer for that and, and make it less um, you know.
Centralized, at least one that.
Yeah, and I think that would be a better location, especially since that's the main uh, in and out to the center. Um, you know, it's not, it's not ideal to have something like that, but over there it would be more protected and again, it would be visible but screened a little bit and protecting.
That's if you have a drive-through, you have restaurants, a quick rest, you know.
Yeah.
The restaurants over here, you won't have a lot of traffic.
Yeah, so we think that would be um, a better location.
Where it's located now, right there.
Right, right where her uh, arrow is on the other side. Cause you'll have like a, you know, a buffer there with the island and so forth.
And what does that display look like? Is it like the Home Depot where you have like a rental um, it's outside the store? That's not the way the, the tractors are made out?
They call it the mic.
Yeah.
Good evening, Michael. How it goes well? Uh, it's typically just tractors parked. So it's not like, I mean, the Home Depot I go to is a bunch of crap just kind of in front of the store, but it's tractors neatly parked with probably parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
I think you'll probably get better marketing on the other side if they're facing facing this way than right there, because we get all the, from all the businesses, all the traffic from a lot of businesses, which you do put it on the other. So looking at that map, it's displaced the, the square footage that you're requiring for your, for your uh, retail business has two paths. Right, so the, the tenant square, excuse me, tenant space, that's still open for who's supposed to, or was originally supposed to go there?
Uh, on the site plan?
Next to uh. Grocery outlet. Between grocery outlet.
Between the grocery, yeah, it's right there.
This was a proposed famous footwear and this was a proposed Five Below and then we had two other potential tenants that were gonna go here.
Okay.
But, but these leases were not signed.
Okay. So the Ross is still kind of maybe, but if the other ones don't come, because they usually come in, in groups?
Um, we once, if, if this is approved, we're gonna have to go figure that out between Ross, Famous Footwear and Five Below. Um, originally Ross said they would not come here unless we had somebody like Five Below and Famous Footwear and then we got them. And then obviously we had these cost increases. I, I don't know what their reaction's gonna be. I can tell you that grouping of tenants, they were the most difficult one, the one that paid the least amount of money and made the least sense to do. So, I mean, we're trying to like pivot here and find another direction that work. And we are going to, we're gonna talk to this whole group of tenants, because, I mean, once once this is approved and it's approved, approved by those, approved by tractor supply, then we'll start going through the process of terminating leases and relocating tenants. It's, it's not something that we could have done prior to this meeting. Um, but I don't exactly know what is gonna end up between grocery outlet and the proposed tractor supply.
What, what typically, what type of business typically are around tractor supply?
Uh, it ranges, um, we, we've seen them, you know, co-tenant with you know, just any everyday goods and services. I, I, I it's different than the ones we've done. I can't tell you like they, like the criteria was saying you have to have this to have this. It's, you know, it's across the board. We've seen kind of, you know, like strip retail where there's a pizza place or a Chinese place or something like that next to them and we've seen them next to you know, soft goods like Ross and uh, Didi's Discounts or something like that. I mean, there's a new one that, or newer one that I, I'm from Fresno that's down the street from my house and there's a, there's a Chipotle, there's a Haven Burger, there's a Dutch Bros, there's a tire place, there's a phone place, there's a nail shop. I mean, the thing is, is they go in retail centers. They don't go into industrial parks or office complexes or anything like that. So, I, I mean, pretty much any they're going to, I think, attract us about any retailer because they drive so much traffic. I mean, I think when you're doing a project, especially the size, you want your anchor tenants to bring in traffic.
Yeah.
And, you know, part of when we started with Ross, but like I was saying, they're hard tenant to deal with. Um, you know, part of getting them was sort of to help us spell out the rest of it, but and when we look at Ross, it used to be they were sort of what we'd call just like a break even type deal and enable you to get the rest of these retailers. But now that break even deal is a multimillion dollar loss and then everybody else they bring along behind him, those end up being losses as well. So that's kind of how we got here. And I, I don't think the construction costs are really gonna change all that much. I think we have a new baseline and until these types of tenants wanna pay, you know, rents for new construction, I mean, I think they're gonna be stuck going into second generation spaces, things like that, but it's um, I think it's gonna take a really long time for that to come back.
The one shopping center that I've, I've seen, yeah, they had, they were next to a Dollar Tree um, nail salon. There was a grocery store. Uh, there was a Wendy's, donut shops, Didi's was across the way, so that it, it's really just at first it kind of sounds weird, because you're like, tractors are in the parking lot. But then you kind of get used to it in agricultural area, it makes sense, but um, okay, just, just kind of wanna get some perfect, excellent question.
Besides tractors, what else do you guys typically um, have outside this store?
Yeah, so there's a, they do small displays in front as well, right in front of the um, the doors and it's small things. Um, hey, they do a lot of uh, pet food. Uh, they do like jeans and work boots. Um, anything really that requires you to be outdoors, they pretty much have. Um, but it's not so much like you won't go to buy a two by four. Right, it's not like that type of construction material. It's more of like um, propane, um, shovels.
They barbecue section too, out there.
Yeah, they do barbecues.
You, you have, you still have the pet sections?
Yeah, they do, they have the pets.
Yeah, cause I'm looking, I'm looking at this here, the wild birds, pets, hunting, livestock, truck and towing.
Yeah, it's a wide variety of.
So again, I think the community would, would embrace it. Um, just my concern would be the displacing the other tenants, yes.
My family would shop there.
Yeah.
Yeah, my.
In a grid, a grid, you know, would be like a boot barn right next to it.
Right?
Yes, that actually would be.
I was kind of envisioning it, you know, what it would be, you know, um, what, what your demographics and who you'd attract and a lot of people are picking up that ranch and farmer lifestyle right now, so.
Well, it's gonna also draw people who are in gardening around their home or composting homes.
Oh, yeah, my daughter can't stop on that.
And this is, this is another short, it's gonna draw from a pretty big trade area too. Um, same, same way as grocery outlet, but.
Yeah.
So your competitors really are Ellie Hearn in this area then? I mean, have you looked at that? Ellie Hearn in King City and.
Yeah.
But, you know, you don't have anywhere, anything in there, so we shouldn't. Yeah.
I think their closest store is probably Watsonville.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I researched at the park. Yeah.
Anyone?
I don't have any question. I would say I have one last question would be um, about how many employees are you looking if, if this were to be approved, once it comes back to the floor uh, for that, because I know right now we're just doing the conditional use component. But, you know, looking at that just for food for thought, approximately about how many employees, once everything's done, we know there's gonna be employment with construction, et cetera, but I'm looking at, once it's open.
We would need to contact Tractor Supply to get you that number. I could estimate it tonight, but we, we build it, we turn it over to them, they operate it, so I don't have the exact number. Um, I guess would be they probably have eight to ten employees there during uh, business hours. What about the nine? Is it just like every, all the stores are, they look the same?
No, so they do have a, a prototype, but it's all really, I've seen all shapes and colors and it, it really all depends on the uh, the environment, the other co-tenants, the shopping centers, you know, shopping centers, they kind of have their own look. Uh, and that's something that we will work uh, very closely with Megan and Ariana. We don't have a design yet. Um, we wanna make sure that it's in line with what was um, previously approved and also what, what's out there now. Yeah, and I should probably clarify, um, they need to know that this use is gonna be allowed, but they have expressed the willingness to work with us on the site plan and the design, so it would we would work with the. We would work with the planning commission on those um to make sure it's compatible in the shopping center. But um they need to kind of get over this hurdle to take the next step before they'll be, they have the permission to continue the design work. Cause it's expensive cost.
No more questions from the uh planning commission or anyone else, so open it, open it up for public comment at six thirty second. No comments via Zoom in person? No comments, all right, closing public comment. Can we get a motion that on these public hearings, we do the motion to approve it, yeah, each individual, right?
Um yeah, so you uh mentioned the motion, uh whether you approve or deny and um someone would second that motion.
Okay, so um. I'd like to um ask for motion to approve PH dash one resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero eight. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Solidad amending conditional use permit number two thousand eighteen dash zero one. Can I get a motion to approve? Uh seven, oh, I have motion, I let you search though, I'll just put the last one up.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve uh.
Right, so if you approves um motion PH. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero eight, a resolution of planning commission city of Solidad amending conditional use permit number. Two thousand eighteen dash zero one, and it was seconded by Ms. Fuerte. All right, and motion passes. Next up, we have.
Vice Chair, um Jonesy.
Yeah. I approve.
Uh Commissioner Sanz Fuerte?
Hey.
Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. But you have a good evening. Okay, next we have uh public hearing number two. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero nine, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Solidad. Announcing findings and recommending that the the city council of Solidad amend. Sections of Title seventeen zoning of the Solidad municipal code to amend chapter seventeen point four. R dash three high density multifamily district and chapter seventeen point three zero industrial districts of title seventeen zoning. Of the Solidad municipal code to incorporate new regulations pertaining to allowable allowable uses.
Hi, thank you. Uh this next public hearing item is coming back to planning commission. Um on the last um. On July eighteenth, um earlier this year, we did bring this um ordinance for a recommendation from the planning commission to city council. To amend um chapters seventeen point four, our three high density district, multifamily district. And chapter seventeen point three zero industrial district to comply with our SB two zoning updates. Um pertaining to allowable uses. Uh next slide. So as mentioned, um the city gained a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh from the state to help facilitate zoning updates in our municipal code in efforts to streamline and accelerate the production of housing. Some amendments were provided on July eighteenth. Uh and unfortunately, uh this one did not move forward by planning commission due to some concerns in industrial industrial district uses. Um as proposed ordinance number seven fifty nine, the R three district is. Amending is being amended to allow multifamily dwelling, second residential units, transitional and supportive housing. As permitted uses, meaning they do not have to come for discretionary approval to planning commission as long as they get appropriate building. Um review in compliance with health and safety. Um also, the minimum, the density minimum has been established to twelve units per acre and um has been. Um well, before, um it was more of a option if I'm not mistaken. Um so we did not get any concerns on the R three district. The main concerns from planning commission were in the industrial districts. Where some of the SB two changes or amendments were proposed that employee housing. Um were was being proposed as a permitted use in the industrial district with specific condition as of thirty six beds in the group quarters. Or twelve units on spaces um to be permitted by right. Um it was noted that um there were some concerns regarding that type of use to be permitted without any discretionary approval. Um and after looking into it and and consulting back with our consultants. Um staff agreed that it is, it was a concern for us to allow that as a permitted use and not have any discretionary review. Relating to health and safety. Um next slide please. Uh so with that being said, we reached out to our consultants who then um had us consult with um. HCD um and provide a reasoning of why they're allowing this as a permitted use. The main um thing is that. Any industrial districts that provide agricultural uses have to have employee housing by right. And our industrial district does include some agricultural uses, so some agricultural uses are permitted by right. Others are permitted through conditional, through a conditional use permit. Um with that being said, we are proposing in the amendments that all agricultural uses are permitted as a conditional use, meaning they do have to come to planning commission. That will trigger uh our employee housing land use to also be. Um per conditionally approved by planning commission, therefore any employee housing projects that do come in into the industrial district would have to come in. Uh for planning commission review and approval um in the efforts to reduce those concerns. Of any um any visual concerns or any um. Uh concerns with health and safety surrounding the area. Uh so staff is proposing the ar- agricultural uses in industrial district, including employee housing, be subject to a conditional. Just conditional approval, um and that's what we're proposing here today um for recommendation, for your recommendation to city council. Next slide. So just to keep in mind, the R three district, those amendments will be applying to the brown areas um in our zoning map. And then um next slide please. This is our industrial district in Solidad, so employee housing would be able to conditionally be approv- uh approved in the the dark purple area. And again, it won't be allowed until it comes into planning commission for review um and decide. And uh review for design guidelines and site plan approval um as we've done with other projects.
Well, I'm, I can't see that far, I can see the purple, so what streets are those?
Like the shopping center.
Yeah, this would be behind the shopping centers, um on Front Street, Nestles and Los Coches Drive. The, which is currently the the area where it's currently more vacant in Solidad, um that would be all industrial. This, it's all industrial right now.
Oh, so it'd be just in the industrial area, yeah, in the future it could be something different.
Right.
Their general plan, but right now.
Yeah, so we are working through a general plan, um and we can consider eventually in the future for commercial development if that's how the city wants to move forward. But for right now, it is all industrial and if any employee housing projects do come in, they'll be able to um. Utilize the current existing land and come for discretionary approval. Next slide please. All right, um so a- again, this is uh ordinance number seven fifty nine. For amend ma- amending chapter seventeen point one four and chapter seventeen point three zero for the R three and industrial district. Um concerns were raised more for the industrial district zoning uh um area. And we're proposing that our agricultural uses are. Uh amended to be conditional as well as employee housing, therefore giving more review to the planning commission. Um for design guidelines and site plan um and consideration of projects that are coming into that district.
Mm-hmm, I have a question. So um. They're using the property for the employee housing in the city, correct? So. That property does not belong to. A farmer or anything like that. So I'm I'm just thinking, cause I'm looking at Salinas, right, and I'm looking at King City and. I know that, you know, Myers used their land to build their housing projects. They didn't approach on an already small city's ability to grow and we don't have that much space to grow. So looking at Salinas a- as well, I'm looking at, you know, they use their property for employee housing. The only one that was questionable was the one in Baronda. So I'm just wondering what the thought process is, is chewing up. A lot of what we, space we have to grow, which is a whole lot, um other than going, you know, going north. Um and then, you know, approving something that is not gonna be filled all of the time. For housing, considering that we already have some problems, so are we anticipating that if we provide something like this? That the ag companies will stop purchasing homes and. Using the homes and limiting the home purchases for regular people to to come in and live. Or is this gonna be on top of what they're already doing with the housing?
Mm-hmm, so right now, um through the municipal code, uh employee housing for an example like that. Is only permitted in residential uh zoned areas um. Through a CUP, which is the same approval process, they would have to come into planning commission um for that same reason. Um currently, we don't have anyone proposing to do an employee housing project, I and I understand the concern that you're bringing, it makes sense. Um but uh that enforced, it'll be enforced the same way as they go into a residential district and also into an industrial district.
Um to piggyback on what she's saying, um and like what you mentioned with the with the new master plan. Is there a specific um of amount of land that needs to be allocated for these type of projects or can you reduce it?
Maybe I could um clarify a little bit. Um we're not trying to change anything, unfortunately, the this. The way that the state law is written, um. I don't think they were contemplating kind of. Industrial ag uses like we have and, you know, solid ag and all this and so forth, so. The regulation is really meant to be for kind of farms um where a farmer by right could. Um provide up to thirty six beds. Um but now the state is saying, if you haven't, if you allow an ag use anywhere. You have to allow that type of housing for the workers. It doesn't make sense in industrial zoning and there might even be through the conditional use process, which we. Agree it should not be by right, a justification to say. Um you can't have that housing care, because if you think about it, for example, um a lot of jurisdictions have ag coolers and they have ammonia. And you can't have people in proximity. It's very dan- it's bad enough to have workers, but if you live there, it's even a much greater hazard, so there. The this is kind of being imposed upon us by this, by the state that we have to allow it. Um but we, I don't anticipate um that an ag employer would wanna build employee housing. In those industrial areas, um because, you know, it can create hazards um. In conflicts and some, and they also are interested in having uh that, those properties for. Truck depots and coolers and other in storage to to move their product, so they're also. They're almost competing with themselves, and so what I've seen is a lot of times. The 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 ag housing that's being built, the newer one, is kind of more, like you say, on the outskirts of town where. Um that's where I like the Camfora project that we have up north, um but. Um state is, uh you know, we're cleaning up our zoning to comply with all these state housing regulations and that's why we're kind of at this. Stage. Um in terms of the residential areas, the other thing to note is under. Um. State law and I think federal law, any residential house um can be uh used. For up to six people. It can be for transitional housing, employee housing, um. Substance, you know, any any type of residential kind of care or employee facility, so. Um I do know that um having come from Salinas, we had a lot of um issues with. Um regulating that because we'd have these companies come in and of course it was a lot more than the what the. Um six people would allow. Um and that jurisdiction decided to, because there were, they were also in the hotels, decided better in the hotels than in the residential area, so they. Opened up the hotels um. Kind of to assist with that, we don't have hotels, I know that's a. Yeah, we have two hotels, but not enough hotels rooms, really, so, um but. It it is not something we think is good planning. You know, it's just something we're kind of stuck with because of the state. That might have been too much information, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so yeah, so right now we're modifying our code, I've made a mention to. Um and luckily we were able to find something that hopefully addresses some concerns from the planning commission.
Yeah, the good news is um the city is deciding to, it's a little bit vague from the state's guidance. But we're deciding that we think it's not good planning to allow it by right, so thank you for bringing that up. And to stick with the conditional use process, which is about as restrictive as we can get legally. So that would add that extra step of coming in and saying, yeah or nay, it's gonna be in the best interest of our community or not. Okay.
That was our biggest concern when we brought it up.
Yeah.
My presentation.
Right, so um open it, open it up for public comment. Okay, so um we'll open up um public. Hearing number two for uh public comment. No comments via Zoom, no comments in person, we're closing it out. Uh public hearing number two. All right, so we'll call and uh speak a motion to approve for public hearing number two. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero nine, a resolution of planning commission of the city of Solidad. Announcing the findings and recommending that the city council of Solidad amend sections of Title seventeen. Zoning of the Solidad municipal code to amend chapter seventeen point four. Fourteen R dash three high density multifamily district and chapter seventeen point three zero di- industrial districts of title seventeen zoning. Of the Solidad municipal code to incorporate new regulations pertaining to allowable uses. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
To motion by Ms. Uh Fuerte, can I get a second? All right, I got a second to approve uh by Citio, yes, thank you very much. I approve.
Yes.
It has been approved, public hearing number two, thank you. All right, so that closes uh public hearings, then we'll open up um all business. None. And we'll close that out, new business, none. We'll close that one out, community and economic development department report. And then this is a community and economic development department verbal report by city manager Megan Hunter. I do want to apologize, Ms. Hunter, that I didn't announce you upfront.
Don't worry, you can call me Megan, so, um but uh I did wanna, um I think you all know about the. Housing element, it's out on the street, um we have our joint meeting um coming up on, I think, the twenty seven.
Yeah.
Um hopefully, um you can all attend, this is a really important um document, I think, uh for the city. Um it has a lot of weight in terms of getting um funding, but also more importantly, it sets the vision for. Um it has a lot of weight in terms of getting um funding, but also more importantly, it sets the vision for. For our housing, for uh the community. And as we are um out and about doing general plan outreach. Um affordable housing and housing in general has become housing um variety. Um has become one of the biggest issues that when hearing people um care about. It's that and more. Commercial offerings um in town uh are the two highest um. I I think thus far I've heard. So hopefully um you can participate. Um we can, you know, the um if you want a lot of paper, we can make you a um hard copy. Of the housing element. If you want a binder, we can just let Andrea know, we can um make it available to you. Um and then in terms of um. Other things going on, we're looking to have a resource fair um at the end of September at Orchard Lane Park. Um and we'll we'll get some information out to you. It'll be um sort of a focus on sustainability. Um because at, as you know, some part of the general plan effort is looking at kind of climate adaptation and also. Um environmental justice. And um we're also um locking in. Our kickoff for the general plan on November second um from four to seven P M. Hot out the presses. I haven't even told the council yet. Um but our plan is to do kind of a day of the dead theme. Um make it fun, you know, have performances, have art and have pop ups. So we can get feedback from people who may traditionally not weigh in into these things um. To really help us, um I think, create a good, a good general plan. Um I don't know, is there anything else that we should let them know?
Oh, yeah. With, I do have a question. The timeframe for the the general plan kickoff that you were talking about.
Yeah, four to seven P M. And we'll, we'll, and if you wanna help or participate. Um at a um pop up activity, let us know, cause we do need volunteers. Um and uh it'll be kind of more like an open house. We we're not gonna do formal presentations or anything. We want. We think it'll be easier if people can just, you know, provide, go to one table and say, oh, I like this or, you know, it it's. Presentations can get a little um much for the public, I think. And then I know you were.
Oh, uh pre-approved um A D U plans. I know that was something else that um planning commission had asked before. Um and I think we did briefly noted that we do have them available, but um we are doing a presentation on council on September twentieth. Just to continue um those who are interested to use pre-approved plans and. Um meet with staff in case they're interested in those A D U plans.
Are those same that came out like on K F W, the the like Monterey County?
This is a collaboration.
Almost too modern for my taste. But I thought it was ugly too, like not not good water, but ugly.
No, this was a collaboration with um King City as South County. So um they reached. They were reached by Design Path Studio, who currently helps City of Salinas do their pre-approved plans and help them. Create the entire package with the A D U handbook. Um and uh King City reached out to all jurisdictions in South Monterey County. And Solidup was the only one who participated. So we collaborated with them to share the same plans um and split the cost for that. And apply those plans here in Solidon, so.
I'm trying to build one. So I'm gonna share, I'll share with you guys my my experience of going through the process.
Yeah, definitely. It'd be very helpful.
Are you gonna do your pre-approved one? Oh, oh, good, yeah. Let us know how it turns out um. And hopefully, they were designed with a building professional. Who really thought about not making it too expensive, you know, um. Not to disparage other jurisdictions, but another jurisdiction in Monterey County did um pre-approved plans and then. They ended up being, not too many people use them, because they ended up being expensive. They, you know, had like. Water lines in different parts of the of the building. So, you know, the, I think. These plans try to think about those things about, you know, not making too many. Making it interesting design wise, but not doing too many ins and outs that create, you know, again, more expense. And thinking about standard window sizes and things like that. So it'll be good to be, bring your feedback.
Yeah, definitely.
Have you picked, have you picked the design?
No, I haven't looked at it yet, true.
Well, first off is.
Yeah, we actually recommend, but was interested to meet with staff. Um usually it'd be me um in case um sometimes my schedule can get swamped. It'll be with our building official Mark, who's more than capable of also. Reviewing plans. But in the case that, you know, building and planning is needed, we can definitely accommodate that. Um so the first step is always to meet with staff to make sure that you have the appropriate uh backyard space or for the detached unit. And then we can guide you through the building process.
So do you have preferred um builders? Prefer projects, yeah. I know King City does and they usually revert and watch and ask you to work with them.
We don't have a list of preferred builders. Um so what we can do is get out, so anything that's submitted to the city is public. Uh for public review. So if we need a contact, a list of those that have submitted material, we can provide it over, but we can't really. Prioritize specific, we're gonna see uh contractors to build.
I think that would be a great resource to have for the community. Like if you have like, not only the the packet, but have, hey, these people have done it before.
Have done it and they're good at it. And and the reason I bring it up is I have property in King City and I submitted permits and then they gave me. You know, contractor information for the preferred, you know, contractors, if you will, uh because I've been busy with them and know. What they need to do in order to um go through the approval process for everything, you know. So that's why I'm asking if there's any.
Yeah, usually um every jurisdiction says, no, we can't do that because we're like. Recommending someone and if there, if something goes wrong, then the city could be held liable for that. But what um we can do is um the builders exchange is actually a really good resource. And we can provide people, they can tell they, if someone's con- has a contract license and. Um they're, they're a pretty good resource locally. Um or we also, I also encourage um people to ask. Um the department what their experience was with a certain builder. So that's a way that we can say, well, it took five reviews to get through the process and then you can kind of under. Cause that part is public record, so.
Yeah, that's all we have.
That sounds like a safer take. You know, in 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 schools, it's the same way. We don't usually recommend vendors. We have a new list. Of approved vendors, but you don't recommend vendors. So recommending the builders. Uh did you say builders?
The builders. Yeah, we can, I I think that's, I'll work with staff to get their pamphlets. I know where I worked before, we, you know, we had. Their pamphlets, so people can call and ask.
I do have one question on the um. That would be endless. How many have, how many of those have been sold?
Uh for the affordable units, um if I'm not mistaken, I think. I don't have a an exact number. Um I think the last update we had received. Maybe around five, five or six. I'm not sure, I could, would not quote myself on that. But um I can definitely um talk with the staff or our building technician to see which affordable units have been approved. And talk with the real estate agent, how they do in does and provide more information.
Right, are you talking about the portable or all all?
No, the affordable ones, yeah. Because I know that there's a lot of people looking for affordable homes. But the restrictions and the requirements were.
Yeah.
Too much for people, so that's curious.
Yeah, that that's one challenge and the other is um. For low income individuals, it's really hard to qualify, especially now with interest rates and so forth. Um so I know that's it's a challenge. Ownership is a challenge at the lower income levels. Because of the cost, even maintenance can can be a challenge. Um so. I think they are having a hard time marketing the units.
Just overall, are they doing well, selling them?
Um.
I think.
Yeah, I think on the market one, rate ones, I think because you don't have the restrictions, I think they're selling pretty.
Yeah, what we've heard from the real estate or the project as a whole is that some are qualified uh for the affordable units. But once it comes to um the mortgage payment, the closeout cost, um they see that they might as well benefit of going for a market rate unit. Because there's no restrictions on that. So um that's something that they're looking at and leaving the affordable unit out and just much rather pay. A few extra dollars to go with the market rate with no restrictions.
What's interesting is, considering we're doing, going through the housing um review. Um offering different alternatives to to people, because I think we've discussed in the past that most people are looking for like a traditional house and. We're seeing that these houses are kind of in the market for a while now.
Yeah, there um, I think um. I I I don't know. I think there's some interest, but maybe marketing to them, you know. Maybe they're not being marketed as they need to be. Cause I've talked to a few people who are like, oh, yeah, I wanna come down and see them, so.
And I, someone told me they thought they were apartments. So, so yes, the marketing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it comes with the marketing and also the education of what the process is, because sometimes. Or if not, the majority of the times, those who are going for the low income units are first time home buyers. I do not understand the process or the requirements for a few things. And once they're going through the process, they kind of step away because they're not. Either don't have the down payment uh or for that unit or something else is missing for for them to fully be uh owner.
Happened to be in there one day just to go see them. And um. I I heard a conversation saying, yeah, we have somebody who wants to buy all four units. And uh. The one of the person says, are they allowed to do that? Was like, I don't know, it sounds like somebody just wants to invest in, you know, a big block of property and then turn around and rent it. And so I think that was also like a concern at one point, you know, when when doing that. But at the same time, they're up and they gotta be sold, so. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, that that can happen, I'm sure. Yeah, that can happen. And I don't know if there's anything else, projects that are forthcoming um that may come back soon.
Yeah, so as we saw tractor supply, um the use has been approved by com- commission tonight. Um and it is proposed to be coming at the next feasible meeting, meaning it cannot be, maybe it'll be next month, but probably not. Due to a lot of things that we have to figure out, get more information. So that is pending to come back to uh planning commission. Um we are working to bring in Panda Express up to you forward. Um as mentioned, we did receive an application for them. Um so they are um conditionally approved by staff. We're just working on a few things to then come bring it forward for.
Is that the corner of what you referred to or?
Panic, no, this would be away from across, yes, in front of the existing Davida analysis. That's on those coaches. There's an empty property there. Um not all the property is being used by Panda Express. Uh uh at least a good amount is, but um that information will be presented for site plan approval. And architectural design approval to be in conformance with our current code. So that will be coming forward to planning commission. Um Dutch Brothers is supposed to also getting approved. Um there was a lot of civil items that needed to be addressed with them, but. Um staff have been working to get that approved soon. And um. Other residential progress, projects, Liberty Court is close to finalizing all homes, which is by Granada. Um all that has been, I think they're going to their last house to be um get a final. And Public Works will be approving the streets to make sure it's all good for the public to just go in and and um. Get new homes right there. Um aside from that, um I think that's all the major updates I have.
So is Davida opening a second site or are they shifting over?
Um no specific uh. Information was provided to us on that. We're not sure if it's a separate location or additional branch. Where one is more of a treatment center and or a rehab center, um or just the medical services for one, one, one area. But um nothing has been proposed that they're taking away from the other location on those coaches, yeah.
Anything else on that? Okay, so we'll close out um the community and economic development department report. Uh next up, we have commissioner reports. I don't have anything either to report. Um I did have a question and I don't know if this is the forum. Uh the farmers market that goes on on Thursdays, is this the forum we've discussed it or no?
Um we can, if you have any questions, this.
Have we considered expanding it or, I mean, it's a really good farmers market.
Yeah, uh expanding it as making it bigger. We do not oversee the farmers market. We do um collaborate with them to get them the proper permits and make sure everything's. Um uh licensed in in terms of vendors. Um the Solid Historical Society and their board oversee the farmers market. Um I think in the past. We did want the city to be more involved than that, but we would have to um wait and see what. I guess that would be a council direction. I'm not too sure if that would be the case.
Um no, I mean, I think um it's it's a lot for a city to like. Typically, a city wouldn't manage the farmers market, cause it it couldn't be like a full time job. Um but we would support and we could put you in contact with uh Mister Greg Stevens to.
And from what we've seen also, um their board is also limited with time. Um so they don't, they're not able to expand as much as they would like to. Um they're only a season, it's only a seasonal farmers market. So I think October, the first Thursday, Thursday of October is their last. Farmers market. Um they don't go till after November. So um it's only a seasonal time because of the weather. And also um uh their own personal staff that works the farmers market.
I do have one more question follow up. Um I was rereading the minutes. Did we find anything about, you know, all the semis and the trucks that are parking in the residential sections?
Um yes, I think that item um was also brought and taken to council. Um to get more information on enough, not mistaken.
Yeah, a lot of it is enforcement. A lot of the um individuals are going down streets that they're not supposed to. Um we are gonna be doing a presentation about truck routes. Um also on the twentieth, the agenda for the twentieth.
Because one of the trucks like tore up of the cemetery gate, you know, the way they were parked.
Yeah.
Um you know, just things like that, so.
That I'm starting to see like in the residential areas, was there any?
Yeah, that would go back to the enforcement because he should not be in the residential area.
Yeah, code enforcement has been um has gone to all of the uh taco trucks more recently. So if you have, if you wanna report them to us, any locations where you're seeing ones pop up, we can let um. Bill slide.
Has the city ever worked towards having like a specialized location for them?
Um I know that in the past, there was a few ideas to have a specific food truck location area. I know um it's also an item that um we, the staff does have to follow up on on the request of a council member. So we we still have to look into specifically what can the city do to either um help enforce those food trucks. Or maintain the number of food trucks um at a good number for the city. Um and also, again, most importantly, enforce it.
Yeah, cause I also think about the people who who pay, you know, brick and mortar and have restaurants that have taken away from from them.
Yeah, but some of those food trucks have some very good. So King City, um on Broadway Street, um they do like a farmer's, it's not even a farmer's market. They call it a farmer's market. And they have a bunch of trucks that come in on Wednesday evenings. Um and they, that's all they do. Um and they, that's all they do is sell food, you know, and you have a lot of people that go up there to go get snacks and food and what have you. Um so, that's something we would entertain here, maybe at a specific location on the. You know, a given night and everyone say it has to be the farmer's market, and that's what I was kind of thinking is, how do we expand it for everybody else, because. You're right, we see them everywhere, but I would like to see them localized so that, you know, people can go in there also buy from them as well.
It, it's a good idea, maybe it would work here in Solidad, um that was an issue, issue. I spent a lot of time in the Salinas vendor ordinance debacle or debate, um. But actually, the vendors, they did not wanna be co-located, we had um a plan to do. Precisely that and they said they would not be in, interested in food truck hub, because they didn't want the competition. And they have their little like locations, so they have their own kind of niche market, so they, they. Yeah, so that was an idea and maybe it would work here.
I'm seeing that as, as cities are growing, you know, I travel a lot, so I see the truck hubs and, you know, and it's, it's. I think it's a good thing, you know, it refers to knowing that there's one specific location to go. And, you know, I understand, personally, well, people can't work. I understand you have your niche, but at the same time, it's like, let's provide something for everybody, because, you know, I didn't know there was one on Prado. So I see them all over the place, but yeah, alright.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea and actually, um the appropriate uh thing to do is. A lot of this stuff in the, the general plan update what is about these things, so, you know, I think it would be great to have a session. With um, you know, to get some of those ideas um out for the um general plan update, so we'll, we'll put that in. Uh we'll follow up with the consultants to add that to the list.
Also be something to maybe dovetail with the con, Container City, right, because I've seen that, where, you know, you dovetail the. The uh, the, the food trucks, and then you bring in, you have festival, you bring in more trucks, right? People don't always like the competition, but you know, hey, people like sushi and people like this, and people like that, ice cream, whatever, you know, so just looking at that. Uh I mean, even in San Pedro Square. I remember the first time I sat out, it was the strangest thing, but you know, they had an actual, the actual ice cream trucks parked inside the building. You know, and they're working out of the ice cream truck, so in Vegas, they have an actual barbecue truck and the barbecue trucks park right in front of one of the casinos. So I mean, you know, there's a lot of different creative ideas now to mitigate price, et cetera, but still provide a service.
Salinas doesn't, don't they do it, like uh once a week where they have all the vendors at the rodeo?
They, they have a farmers market, yeah.
Yeah, oh, really?
Train station parking lot.
Oh, they did open that one, yeah.
See, we'll be next if they even brought in flower vendors, you know, they brought in other vendors as well. So people could stop by and just, you know.
Socialize, eat snacks, buy flowers. Well, we have, I think, like you said, a great opportunity with the Container Village, we're trying to get that together.
That's still, still going.
Still working on it. Yep, still working on it, yeah, still a priority and um, yeah, we're hoping to. Get some things done on Front Street, so.
We made the news for the, the uh playground.
It didn't make the news for the grand opening where we had a thousand people show up.
I heard that, it was a remark that they did announce it, but I didn't see that.
Yeah, we had a great, I don't know if anyone went, but we gave, we ran out of five hundred, almost. Five hundred hot dogs in the first hour and a half and, you know, it was a huge turnout.
I've heard a lot of feedback, very positive.
Everyone's happy, everybody.
I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-one, thank you very much, everyone, for your time.